I don't have a secondary, and then we have a consumption issue.
Can I ask the following, they have already been done. There are a lot of things that have to be done in the same manner I've asked Chad to go back to the police chief, is that when we be presented a small list, it doesn't have to be very detailed. It says, "These are our top 20 projects." They've gotta be done, okay? Here's the dollar amount, okay? Are we gonna be able to fund 20 projects? Are we gonna be able to fund 50? I don't know the answers to that as we go through this budget process.
And I'm aware of that, and I believe on one of our workshops, we went down to the power point, a point ten.
But it didn't have any dollar figures on it. Okay. Now, we're at a point, okay, where every dent dime has to be justified, okay? And there's no way we can do everything that this city needs to do. So, I'm asking you guys who are on the ground there to give me a list. And if you could only do one project, what would it be? If you could do three, what would be the top three? Give me the top 10, top 20, but a high dollar amounts to it.
And I have that already.
Okay.
And I'm asking you, you as the council.
We have brought the new to the current budget. I mean, the codes like if they are the same ones, we don't have.
And I'm asking each elected official here that if we wait any longer on these four that I have said, we might have a problem if it goes, if one of them goes down, especially on the water.
Are they listed in the document?
Yes, number one oh seven.
Okay, well, do we have some?
But I'm not asking you to give me all the 20 projects that I got on the list. I'm saying these four are the ones that we really need right now.
Okay, there's four.
From the ones that were submitted in the budget, have priorities changed on anything since this date?
The, the, uh, the water side, it moved up ahead of the wastewater. For in this particular case, cause some, cause some concern of the safety, not only for the deployed, but for safety.
And I appreciate that.
So, it speaks a, it's a, it took over the, replaced the fire?
I think. For right now, yes, because I'm talking safety. And, and if I'm, if I'm gonna put bad water, I don't want bad water going out to the citizens.
I saw some of those dollars in the capital fund. But there's several items, one, two, three, four, five, that say need quote. Can we get just at least a ballpark figure on this?
Yeah, I can, I can do that.
Okay. And, and by Monday, when we meet again, the, the health and safety ones, yes, I appreciate it. I'm listening to what you're saying. I'm not ignoring what you're saying. But give me a complete list so that we can, as we go through this, okay, say, "What can we fund? What can we not fund?" Do we fix, you know, a, a, a health and safety issue? Or do we hire a police officer? Or do we increase somebody from part-time to full-time? Some hard decisions have gotta be made. I understand the priorities. But help me so, 'cause I'm kinda one of those visual guys and one of those numbers guys. So, that, I, you know, here's Andrew's list. These are the things that he told me we gotta do. These are the things Ruby said we gotta do. Because I don't know anything about sewer plants or water towers or water lines or any of that other stuff. You're, you're the experts.
Okay. One thing that I would like for y'all as the elected officials to go out there and see some of the problems that I have out there. So, y'all can visualize it and see the things, how they're deteriorating. And then you can understand a little bit more why I am concerned. And I'm, I'm not saying take away from Chuck Chad here. I'm saying this is the way it is. I'm not gonna sugarcoat anything. I'm telling you, this is the way it is. And you as our elected officials, I, I need this because that publicity can come out if we get bad water and people get sick. And that's why I'm concerned about the hospital boulevard.
See, we're pretty fast, but it goes smothering. It's got sulfur.
That's only one area. How long was it really?
I mean, the needle got it going, but it went out again.
How long has it been?
Uh, not sure.
Couple of months.
No, it's a little longer.
It came up with war when I came to this side of, of, of the workforce.
And I, I will tell you this from my personal perspective. If it's a health and safety issue, it's a no-brainer we gotta do, okay? If it raises taxes, it raises taxes, okay? It's a no-brainer. I will commit to you that if it's a health and safety item, that it's an immediate emergency, I'm gonna vote to be funding those sorts of things. And I think every member of this council's gonna do it. Help us do that. That's all I'm asking you to do, is help us do that so that as we go through this, and we don't lose sight of the things that we, that I promised you, that, yes, this is health and safety.
But I can do that, what you're asking me. But when it gets presented, I would like to find that you're a decision, not, I now need this.
There's two, two things.
So, that's what I'm asking yesterday. Well, we're asking for today, Tuesday, and yesterday's.
And on the things that show unfunded, like the aerator that you spoke about, the catwalk, we pair, that says unfunded.
Well, now, it was funded. I think we put it on the, on one of the power points.
So, there's gonna change.
The catwalk is, it's 15,000.
So, you know how much it is?
It's 15,000 to do it completely.
Catwalk, yes. We, we didn't have, when we put this, the proposed budget on August 1st, we still did not have quotes for the aerator portion. So, it, it remained unfunded. And yes, would we possibly say, "We're not gonna do the line pump and housing and move that money to there"? If we'd gotten information, we could have. With the time, we, we, we're trying to get, all of these things are, are a priority, and that's why they're in here. But unfortunately, we didn't have all of the dollars and known facts to be able, and we had a balanced budget, and that's what was proposed.
And we're gonna address these things on Monday. We're gonna get you the doc. You've got the approval to do the things that you got with the dollars that we have. We're gonna dot those i's and cross those t's. We're gonna address these things. Just help me with the list. And, and, you know, if you gotta make, this is red, gotta do yesterday. This is yellow, gotta do today. This is green, gotta do tomorrow. That helps.
Well, I can understand that. I appreciate that. But I can give you some of the critical priorities and to the ones that will need to be done later on, but they're not as critical as the ones I'm speaking about.
And if we don't have cost history, do a SWAG. So, I mean, are we talking about 15,000 dollars?
I can, I can, I can do that.
And just identify it, SWAG. That, that's okay. If we don't know if it's gonna be 15 or 25,000 dollars, tell us 25,000 dollars so that we can plan appropriately, okay?
And I have to be honest with y'all, council. Trying to get quotes from some of the vendors, for some reason, for the city of Florisville, they're coming back and saying, "All you do is ask me for quotes, Andrew. You don't buy nothing from me." So, when I call, they may be in the office, but they'll say, "Oh." So, that's where we're having the problem also.
Andrew, you said some of these things need to be done yesterday.
Yes.
The question again, is Mr. Miller, do we have monies in the, in this year's budget to be able to fund some of these things that are broken already?
In the budget, for the budget amendment that we, that was brought since, since, well, let me back up. On the June 27th, we had some priorities. From the June 27th meeting to the July 11th meeting, we had a priority change on, on, on the items. But since the July 11th meeting, and actually since the August 1st proposal, we did get information on the sludge rates. They're 4,000 each. So, they're not, they're very phenomenal. I consider that nominal. The other people do not. It's not considered a capitalized or uncapitalized. It's different. It's capital, but it's not a large capitalized.
So, they've already got the approval to do it?
No. These, these are the personnel dollar savings that, so some of these things are already funded.
Well, those have been due.
That's what we're saying.
Yes, sir.
Go, go do it.
And I'll get you your, your list. You said by Monday.
Yes, sir, please.
It probably doesn't help either that, you know, if previously, if everything's been passed back, passed off, and somebody's been to give us highball bids just because they don't wanna deal with this in the first place. So, that's a.
But that's not.
Probably some of them are.
In this process, Eric, can you work on the field?
Right.
Just like I do. In the process, I've encountered new vendors. I'm trying to build new relationships.
That's good.
Where if I, if I lose a motor, then I can call a certain vendor, and I can take that motor and he'll take care of it. So, same time where vendors that are being hard-nosed, I'm finding new relationships. I'm not just, I'm just not sitting there trying to get the same guy. I'm going around. I've been around in this business long enough to be able to handle those type of things.
You'll find one that's hungry.
Yes.
And, and you said the problem on hospital boulevard, does that include there right around F Street? Because that, every time I go by it, it is the worst smell. Is that the problem there?
Well, no. It's, what the aerator's doing is, they're, it's supposed to oxidize the, the water. So, all the smell and, and all that can go away. Then we have fluorination going in there to disinfect it.
There's a lot of sulfur in our water.
Yeah.
There's a lot of sulfur, and that's what that, that vehicle does. It takes sulfur.
Oh, I see.
And then, and then once it goes through that process, it comes out. And before it goes to the elevated tanks to go out to consumption, it's disinfected, and it goes out. And we're testing the water every day. Notice the state out there.
That's another way.
Madam Mayor, may I make a suggestion on the items that you're indicating? If you could indicate a part of the enforcement proceeding that's applicable, or the part of the Texas Administrative Code that you already have memorized, it might be helpful for the council to know which ones are direct violations.
Okay. Oh, in your list, okay.
Yes, yes. I was, I was gonna put the storage tanks in. It could be a T-SAC violation.
It is.
The water up here could be a TCQ violation. The, the lift station also is a TCQ violation.
We do know that.
So, and TCQ ain't cheap, and they're not shy.
Why did you name motor on the road on F Street?
That's probably proof mile. Oh, because of the growth?
Yeah, oh.
It's gonna grow?
Yeah.
And.
Because it's the newest well, right? Because it's the newest.
Yeah.
But like I said before, all it is is just a matter of purchasing the motor and installing it. It's already prepared.
But, but then I found out from the engineer that the reason third motor was never put in is because, now I gotta get with Phelps, and you might be able to help here, is that it's underpowered. If I put the third motor, that, that I'm gonna get shortages out there. So, I was gonna go talk to Phelps and ask him, okay, "Why? Why am I underpowered there when we just put a new elevated tower two years ago?" And you, you also brought, one time that, I forgot who that gentleman was, that you said, "Why am I always losing power? I'm in a little storm, I'm always losing power." Well, that's where our, our well's at. So, I need to set an appointment, talk to, I don't know if you've got engineers or whatever over there, I just need to set up something that can tell me, okay, "Why am I underutilizing power?"
And these, all of these things are, okay? All of these things, the dollars were set aside for whether we're waiting for quotes. Let's do them. That, that was clearly the issue. We'll dot the i and cross the t for the budget amendment on Monday, you know? But we certainly don't need to create a health and safety issue, okay? And then as we move into the next year's budget, we're, we're gonna have to look at and the have-to-do's. We don't have an option, okay?
Excuse me, Mr. Miller, we're having a meeting on Monday?
We're gonna have to have a meeting on Monday. The mayor, if we're waiting for the police department to give us information to ask about these things, if we're waiting for, for details on these projects, if we're gonna stand in front of the citizens of this community on Wednesday with a budget, we better have some finalized version of a budget that we're gonna present to them.
I know, but it hasn't been, it hasn't been a budget. So, we can't, that's what I'm trying to do.
Seven, no, seven to hours, and it's still postable.
It starts Friday.
Okay. We, we have the ability, and what, as the mayor and I discussed this with the city manager, it was, we went through this, and I found a lot of challenges in this budget. There's some things that we have to be able to defend to the citizens of the community. We must understand this budget as a council before we stand out there and listen to the citizens.
I'm not objecting to it. I just hadn't heard about a posting meeting.
And so, what I proposed in the, the meeting that we had yesterday was that we scheduled budget workshops for Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday next week to finalize this budget so that we can present it to the citizens of our community. Because we are the responsible people. It is not the city manager. It is not our comptroller. It is not city staff that are held responsible for this budget. So, we must understand it and be able to support it, you know? Just as we had issues with the police officers, just as we had issues with, with the vehicles, just as we have concerns over how personnel dollars are spent, we've gotta understand this. And it's gonna take some tweaking, I honestly do believe. And it's gonna take some strong guidance from this council to city staff so that we have a budget and a firm tax rate to present to the citizens of the community, not, well, it's not gonna be more than 46 percent. We gotta be able to go out there and say, "We're, we're proposing a tax rate that increases it three cents, or that increases it two cents. But this is what we're going to do. This is what we have to do to be able to provide for public safety and the infrastructure of our roads and our utility system."
And show our constituents where this money is going, rather than putting something on the, on a budget and them not seeing it.
So, I, I would propose that we do that. If we are able to complete it on Monday, then we don't need to have the workshops on Tuesday and Wednesday. If we complete it on Tuesday, we don't need to have the workshop on Wednesday. But it may be Wednesday afternoon, just before the public hearing, that we're able.
Wednesday, the Wednesday budget workshop, actually, the Wednesday budget workshop, Mr. Tally will be here presenting a health insurance. So, that actually will need to be held. Because that's.
Are we done with all the other things that weekend? I don't know how, if we'd be able to just speak about, you know, what's gonna go on the agenda for, you know, if, if we have a meeting on Monday? What can we present to kill more birds than one stone?
Well, we clearly have to follow a workshop with a council meeting to approve the expenditures of this second budget. We clearly have to do that.
You're swatching line items. You're swatching line items in the effect, aren't you?
No, actually, the, because the budget amendment was approved with the perreso that it comes back to the council, we, we dot that i and cross that t in a special city.
In a formal meeting.
You can do it on Wednesday. I mean, the projects aren't gonna get started tomorrow.
But since we're going to be having a budget workshop, let's go ahead and get that done as part of that meeting, just to formally do so, okay?
It's a one item agenda.
Correct. And then the Tuesday is a if-needed workshop. And Wednesday, we clearly have to have a workshop because of the insurance. But we need to be able to finalize this as a council, certainly before we go in front of the citizens. I don't think we have to have a forum for a workshop. We do have to have a forum for a, for any business. I would propose to this council that we schedule these meetings, except for the one that's already, what time is Wednesday scheduled?
5:30.
That we go with Monday at 5:30 and Tuesday at 5:30. With Monday's workshop immediately followed by a special city council meeting to ratify or whatever verbiage we need to do on this budget. That would be my recommendation.
And just, you know, remember, we do have, the 12th, the number 12 is when you actually adopt the budget, and we had a plan on having workshops before all of those meetings. So, you're not done next week. We still have till the 12th.
We are done from the perspective of the citizens are, we've done an ad to newspaper.
For discussion, that is exactly what it's for.
Unless we as a council know what we're gonna be taxing the citizens of this community, regardless of what the law says or the verbiage says, if we don't know where we're at by next Wednesday when we stand out there, we'll be crucified, okay? Particularly if we go with the rate that's published in the paper, which is above the rollback rate, okay? Great, I understand the law, and I appreciate that. But I think we must have a much bigger understanding of this budget before next Wednesday.
Well, I will not be here Monday, so unfortunately, I cannot help on any meeting.
Sure, I can do that.
All right. This is this council. We're going through it with the pieces. We've got the police department ready to give us a list. We've got the.
What time will we be ready on Monday?
And then is there, is there more questions?
Chief, don't come back out, talk to him this evening.
Is there anything else, though? We still have a few more minutes that we can, any questions that maybe I can answer on the general fund? We talked about the utility fund.
I'd like to kind of go over these things here that we developed over the, Tuesday, Wednesday.
Can I talk a little bit about some of the things that I found?
So, I can answer that.
That, that, there was a council discussion, and I think this council will agree, that we have all said, "Leave the vacant positions alone." And to utilize those dollars here and in the future budget to remove them, those vacant positions. As we look at the chart, there was six or seven vacant positions. As I go through this budget and read some of the print, we're utilizing those dollars, those savings in dollars, and changing somebody from part-time to the full-time. We are using those dollars to hire contract employees. I don't think that was the intention of the council, okay? Particularly when we're having to make hard decisions on health and safety, when we're having to make hard decisions when it comes to public safety. So that when we look at them, that's why in this sheet that Mr. Winter's prepared, it showed the dollars that were there. I'm very concerned about that. Yes, we do have needs, but we're gonna have to prioritize those needs, okay? And the council, I believe, has been very clear and said, "Leave those positions vacant." If we use those dollars to do other things, we're, we're not realizing that savings. Let's use that savings or those dollars to do some of the things that we absolutely have to do. And let the council make that decision. I noticed a, when it came to personnel, that we've got just this 30 percent blanket increase when it comes to benefits.
No, that is, that is the health insurance.
Right, right.
That's calculated on, exactly on the number of employees that currently have health insurance.
Please let me finish.
And that is the actual amount we've been given.
Okay.
We, that wasn't the last meeting, and the meeting before that.
Are you done? A 30 percent on that. I also understand that we've gotten five quotes and are awaiting a sixth. In a conversation I had with Mr. Tally today, he's gotten another quote that has further reduced the rates.
We haven't gotten that.
What did you tell me about? Friday, I was told we had one additional quote, so.
I'm, I'm beginning to lose my patience in the number of constant interruptions. I believe that as a council member, I have the right to ask questions and speak without being interrupted. And I would ask Madam Mayor, as the chairman of this meeting, to allow me to speak without The point I'm trying to make on this is we don't have an exact figure yet, but we've got a good figure. My question is, how close is this 30 percent to the five quotes we have already had? I asked this question of Mr. Winter, and he said, "This would be one of the things." I'm just expressing some concerns that we have here. I see in the police department budget, some things that I have some questions about. We go to page 44 on this budget. We talk about some of the major budget changes. There's 79,549 dollars that relates to collective bargaining. I'm assuming these are guaranteed raises as part of the agreement. I don't have any problem with that.
That's, that salary and the, the TMRS, et cetera, that's the entire.
Okay. I, I see that. But I also see an increase in incentive and holiday pay. What is the basis for that increase? I also see an increase.
Can I answer that?
Same as you said.
In overtime, okay? If these are additional pay or additional compensation, I believe that requires council action. If it is part of the collective bargaining agreement, I'm okay with that. But because it is separated out, I have that question.
And the, the reason I separate it out is because it is an actual incorrect budgeting in the current year. When Tom helped work on the budget, they were not, did not budget appropriately for what is considered, what I call, or somebody will call incentive pay, which is for education pay and your T-clothes. That amount is a little over 20,000 something dollars just to the straight. That's not counting the TMRS, it gets calculated on that, or social security, Medicare, and workers' comp. And then the holiday pay, again, and this is something that I've dealt with for years working in budgets, and it does get left off. It's one of those things, people don't realize how much it adds up to. The holiday pay, we have 15 holidays, and police officers are guaranteed that are working. They also get holiday pay for 10, 10 hours. And you typically have five on duty at an average of about $21 cents of salary. That is 16,238. So, with all the benefits, that dollar amount is actually, our current budget is, that's part of why we're starting to see we're getting too close to our budget dollars. And when you look back at history, that is, in the past, you have been over budget in that department. Not due to people getting in, paying the increases, they weren't allowed it, it just was not part of the budget. So, I, I chose to show that, put that, instead of just rolling it in, because it isn't something new. But I wanted to make sure it was understood why the police department.
Is this part of the police collective bargaining?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Well, it's, yes.
So, what you're telling us is that although through June 30th, we, we budgeted 944,500 for police department under personnel, that we are gonna have a shortage in this fiscal year.
Yes.
Of 61,000.
It's gonna be quite that much, because you also have collective bargaining dollars that increased us slightly. But yes, you're gonna be, as I started working on budget in June slash, you know, I've been working a lot of things, that is one of the things that has come up when I started working on salaries, my, they weren't working out, because I have salary spreadsheets that I use to help me, that I create and that I do, and then as I started working, yes, and.
Okay, well, I, I, I find this alarming that we have a 61,000 or 58,000 dollar shortfall in the current year's.
Fifty thousand.
Fifty, still, 50,000 dollar shortfall in this budget, okay? That is unfunded, okay? That we haven't been made aware of.
I will be, and that is part of, and again, I started working on this in June, July, and this is where we are, and that is one of the reasons it's in the budget and is there.
I, I find that alarming, but thank you for the clarification. So, I, the other piece that, that I found real alarming, and I don't even know that it's legal, is when we look at this proposed budget, now, there's two points in this proposed budget, and this may be an issue, the first one may be an issue of semantics. We create a maintenance department, and we move an employee from one department and put him in the maintenance department. We move employees from parks and rec to the event centers, and I'm paraphrasing, to more accurately reflect their, their usage. But as I understand the city charter, the council approves the organizational structure. So, if we're gonna rearrange personnel, I think that must first come to the council for approval, instead of simply being approved in a budget. I found that a bit disconcerting. The other piece that I found very disconcerting was in this budget for street maintenance tax. One of the recommendations was a 1.1 million dollar revenue bond. We'll obligate our street maintenance sales cap for the next couple of years or three years, so that we could get 1.1 million dollars and maybe do some more projects all at once on streets that we couldn't do peacefully. I'm not opposed to that idea, but this budget does seemingly assumes that we're gonna obligate dollars to a tax. obligate dollars to a tax bond. Uh, I think, again, that must be a separate council action to do that. I found those items disconcerting in it. And what I asked Mr. Winters to do, maybe not in this format, was prepare for the council the dollar figures that it takes to open the doors and close the doors to the city with no options. And then tell us, what is that tax rate? What tax are we gonna have to charge to do that? And then, we can then look at the list, Andrew's list, check the chief's list, the streets' list, and make the decisions. What do we add to this budget that we gotta do to function as a city? And then what is that tax rate going to do? We certainly can't sit here and say, "We're gonna upgrade employees from part-time to full-time," if we don't know how we're gonna be able to fix an emergent situation with city. So we, we've got hard choices to make. None of them are pleasurable, but I think we have to look at it in, in that fashion. And, and I'm not discounting the work of any city staff. Okay? But, you know, and, and I understand the, the process of, of accepting or of, of a, a record vote on a rate, and I understand the process for the public filings. But based upon our newspaper's article, we're gonna be crucified. We, we don't have an option. My phone's ringing, and I'm sure you guys are ringing, people yelling at me, saying, "You're raising my taxes." We, we've gotta make some hard choices, and we've gotta start with, what's the absolute minimum that we gotta do and add to it? And ask the questions, how are we gonna do this next year? And how are we gonna do it the following? And we really only have a week to do that.
Chair, when, when you, you said you couldn't have it by Monday?
I always say that is because, uh, the chief's off tomorrow, and by the time I get with him, it'll be Monday that we start on it. I mean, we could try to get it all put together by Monday afternoon.
Well, I, I, I honestly believe, we can't wait. If, if it's not complete, if it's in pencil, give us some, like I told Andrew, we've, we've gotta make some decisions. Okay? And we've gotta be able to put this budget into a, a form that's one or two pages that we can hand out to the citizens of the community and stand up there and support. Because if this is what I gotta stand up there and support, I can't do it.
Can we ask a question of the attorney on the department? Because I'm, I wanna make sure I understand. The departments that were created and reading the charter, the service department already existed, it just was, unfortunately, included in the streets department. I mean, the, the, the service mechanic, the department existed.
Was service and streets rolled into one?
Yes, sir. The mechanic. Okay? So all we did was in order to start, in order to see the, the activity, put it in its own. The same with the two civic, uh, civic center, there's, um, the laborer that works, cleans, helps clean and do those sort of things, and then the, the facility supervisor. Those two positions were included in the parks department, which we already had a civic department, civic center department, all we did was move those over. Would that be the same as when the charter brings, talks about creating a department? We didn't create any new, you know, we didn't go say, "We're gonna go create an, an economic development department." We just put them under one description that they belonged in.
But you, but there was one employee that was moved...
No.
To, to the, to the, to the civic center, correct?
No.
Yes, if you read the comments in here...
We, 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 in the proposed, we...
Because there was, there was one already there that was where Gloria...
Right.
And now there's another additional.
No, we proposed, we proposed a part-time, yes. We were proposing putting a part-time person, yes. But again, this is a proposed budget, that was one of the things we're saying, and the council, when you go through the budget process, typically, that's part of where you adopt budgets and you adopt a new organizational chart if need be, et cetera. But that's why I'm saying on these other ones, the service department was, I mean, again, it already existed, it just was rolled into the streets.
So the original one that Gloria had out there, he's still out there?
He's still out there, and he's...
One of the originals in the parks.
Well, the, Gloria and the gentleman's salary are included in the parks department, which is, makes it difficult when trying to show the civic center's expenses, so all we did was just put them over into the civic department, and they already existed as a department, their own department.
And my, my question on this was not, are we creating a new department or not? But is this just in a accounting process? Or are we changing the other one? And I said, I caveated it, it may be an issue of semantics. I think we can answer that question before Monday. I don't think we need to debate it out here. But there are terms in here that say employees were moved to this department, or this department was created. And, and it was that kind of verbiage that caused me to ask the question. I wasn't saying that it was wrong, I was just asking the question.
Well, I think the answer to the first one, if I understand the splitting the hairs we're doing here, is those two belong together, because it's service, maintenance, that's all the roads and the utility. Right? Service is the...
No, the service department, the gentleman who just repairs vehicles.
Okay, and he's repairing vehicles for roads and water?
Everybody. Everybody, for general fund and water.
Right.
But he's, his salary was in the streets department, which those people do street work.
Okay, I see the problem.
So, and we brought it up to, it was at a budget workshop, that particular department was discussed at a budget workshop, that we were going to be creating, but we're not really creating a department because he already existed. So that was my, I'm, I wanna make sure it's...
I'm comfortable, Jim, that that one's probably not worth taking.
Well, I have, my, my, my concern here with this budget, okay, is if we're doing this, okay, is not to do it simply in the budget.
Right.
That if we are creating a different structure, then along with this budget, we got an org chart that says, "We're moving this person to here, but the, we're not creating a new position. We're just creating an accounting process for it so that the council can visualize, these are the departments, that's why it's this way." You've done it that way for the accounting, so it makes sense, so that we can capture the dollars from water that are being, water and sewer, where they're doing repairs for water and sewer, as where, as they're doing repairs for street maintenance, to different funds, but we've gotta be able to capture the both and account for the project. Our organizational chart should reflect that. My point is, and my comment was, that it can't just be in the budget, we must accompany this budget or this proposed budget with the change in the org chart.
I think that's right.
Anyway, here, here's that question that totally's open, keep the doors open, here's options that you can add to it.